This meeting of the Mawa Board of Education is open to members of the public to be physically present. Members of the public that attend will be asked to follow the same procedures as all other visitors to our schools. Those procedures can be found on the Agenda page of our website. Additionally, the board meeting will be livestreamed for viewing purposes only. Anyone wishing to view the meeting may do so by Zoom. Webinar ID for this meeting is 827-9493-8333, and the required password is 788373. Call this meeting to order. Roll call, please. Ms. Here Marcha.
Mr. De Silva.
Here.
Mr. Kismarski.
Here.
Mr. Copeland.
Here.
Mr. Gallo.
Here.
Ms. Dabanyero.
Here.
Mr. Denise.
Here.
Mr. Hughes. Mrs. Tang Jansen. Mrs. Worthy.
Up here. Adequate notice of the Agenda for this meeting has been provided to the Ridgewood News and the Record specifying that the Mawa Board of Education will meet on November 12th, 2025, in the Administrative Offices, 60 Ridge Road, Mawa, New Jersey. A copy was filed with the Township Clerk. Our salute to the flag. Mr. Copeland.
My pleasures to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we don't need an executive session here in the beginning, so we will continue on to Agenda questions. Please limit your questions at this time to resolutions under New Business on this Agenda. It's a matter of fairness, we're asked to limit your questions to no more than one, and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you are here as an individual, please give us your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes. I need a motion to open the meeting to the public. Mr. Copeland, second by Mr. Gallo, we are officially open to the public. All right, seeing that one come forward at this time, I should... Oh, sorry.
Hi.
Hi.
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Ledigar, 41 Glasgow Terrace. This is Melissa De Vries. We're here tonight to raise an issue we're deeply concerned about at our school. We have daughters...
I apologize, I thought you just stopped you. Is there a resolution under New Business on the Agenda for tonight's Agenda? Or I'll ask you to wait till public participation at the end.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, that's okay. But if it's related to something on the Agenda... No, my mistake.
Oh, not a mistake at all. Just clarification. Thank you so much. We'll look forward to it at public participation, which is towards the end. Thank you. All right, motion to close the meeting to the public. Mr. Kismarski, second by Mr. Denise. Our Mawa student representative report this evening.
Hello, fun, nice to meet you all of you. Sorry, I've been here, very busy at soccer, but I'd like to introduce myself. My name is Nicholas Muley, and I'm also a correspondent secretary at SGA. So what's going on in high school? So five NHS vocalists spent the last three days in Atlantic City preparing for the state mix concert with Mrs. Mornowick Fold. Eleven high school students accepted into the Bergen County Chorus. They're finalizing preparations for the play, which is called Done to Death, and it's called the Senior Citizens Performance of the 19th at 4:30. The show opens on the 20th, and there's also performances on the 21st and the 22nd. Students from AP Gov and Young Politicians Club worked at the general elections as poll workers in the eight different locations on November 4th. That's pretty busy for them. We had the varsity cheer team win first place at the Hackensack High School Cheer Competition. Three student artists win the I Voted sticker design competition for the Women's League Voters. And finally, the NHS Thunderbirds earned a score of 86.4 at the US Band NJ State Championship at Robbinsville High School in open class, too. That's all I've got.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nicholas. I just want to make sure, and pronounce your last name for me.
Muley.
Muley.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Muley. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And welcome to our board and to the dais. And you may leave if you'd like. I know you want to stay, Mr. Muley. We always, we love, you know, participation, so if you'd like to stay, feel free, but we appreciate you have a lot going on. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Di Toro, your report for this evening.
Yes. The first event that I'd like to bring to the board's attention, a number of you attended, it was the Referendum Communication Committee. We had our first meeting this past Monday. It was a great turnout. It was held on, at T3 Building. During the session, the district's architect presented an overview of the temporal projects associated with the upcoming referendum, and in communication, console net line strategies for effectively informing and engaging the Mawa community. So approximately 30 participants attended, represented, they represented the staff, parents, and the community members. And it was great to hear really the history of the community members. For those who were in attendance, we're able to understand that a large number of our parents were students in the district. So it really says a lot about the value of this community and how people grew up here, they stay here, and they're growing their families here. The next piece, it took place last week. Evening of capstone shareouts for our Mawa interns and externs, as we've talked about many times, is a point of pride for us. Mawa high schools incoming juniors and seniors recently showcased their learning from summer internships and externships during an evening of capstone presentations. The event highlighted the valuable experience students gain through real-world professional opportunities. Special thanks to Mr. Gregson and Ms. Noel for organizing the program and fostering continued connections between students and their mentors through the capstone initiative. For those in attendance, you were able to see the wide variety of internship and externship experiences that range from something as local as working in district, whether in central office or a camp convention, but going as far out as working at law firms and medical facilities. And I believe the Bank of China was also one of the organizations that our students interned with. So valuable across the board, and the pride that our students had in presenting their learning, and the way they were able to articulate their experience that they gained with real-world learning opportunities was just a sight to see. And just to recap, I know I've said this many, many times, I believe this is the third year of us doing it. We went from three students, two of which presented here the first year as our pilot program, and then we went to 25 last year, and we're over 60 this year. So we're really trying to build that program because we see the value in that program. The next piece is, as always, we're always proud of our student athletes, and two of our students were able to experience Signing Day, Abigail Clark and Cam Robitard. Abigail committed to Fairfield University for our lacrosse team, and Cam committed to Zinkbana Ventures for the lacrosse team. So congratulations to both. And I've said this at previous meetings, I'll say it again, we're truly proud of all of our athletes. Our sports programs did a great job this year, specifically our Boys and Girls Lacrosse Team. They competed at a high level and really showed out for Mawa Public Schools. So congratulations to all of our athletes. This is great, and, listen, they're all great, but this is something that, as we continue to look to build opportunities for our students, this is a result of Mr. Corey and his team at Ramapo Ridge, looking to see what type of experience we can have for our middle school students. Just a couple years back, we didn't have much to have our kids feel connected to the school. And Mr. Corey and the team really tried to look at all opportunities to make our kids feel like they're not just coming to school and going home. What opportunities do they have to connect with each other outside of the classroom? As we all know, we brought back our middle school sports program, which has been fantastic, but he's also looked for club opportunities. If you do remember last year, this was a new club, our, our, it's not the Lego Club, what is it called?
It's our Engineering Club.
It's our Engineering. And part of the curriculum is that they do builds with Legos. This is something that's not just based on the elementary side, this is something that's more of a competition across the state. So the Ramapo Ridge Middle School Engineering Club will participate in an upcoming Brickfest qualifying tournament later this month. This year, Ramapo Ridge is proud to serve as the host site for the Bergen County competition. The event will feature large-scale themed models, interactive building stations, and contests such as speed building and Lego car derby races, offering students and attendees an engaging, hands-on STEM experience. So this is just one of the many opportunities of really spot, being able to highlight the facilities we have here at Mawa and putting our name on the map while allowing our kids to compete at a high level with their counterparts across Bergen County. Ramapo Ridge Middle School Marking Period I Check-In. As I shared in the past, Ms. Craft has done a wonderful job of expanding our opportunities for parent academies. So as part of our continued effort to strengthen our communication and partnership with the Mawa families, Ramapo Ridge hosted a virtual meeting on Zoom to support parents following the release of marking period one grades. The session focused on strategies for meaningful check-ins with students, conversations about learning and growth, goal-setting for upcoming marking periods, and ways families can work alongside their children to promote future success at the middle school level. This was run by our guidance department, our administrative team, and Ms. Craft, so I just wanted to thank them for their continued efforts to reach out to the families and bring them into that learning process, and continue to really pull back that curtain on what's taking place at the middle school. Because as we all know, when we ask our middle school students, what's happening at school? The answer is nothing. But as we all know, there's a lot that's happening across our buildings, and it's a great way to showcase to our parents, this is what's happening, but more importantly, how do we engage our kids in those productive conversations so we can work alongside of them each and every day? So thank you to the team, thank you to the guidance department for making this happen. We had a great turnout. I believe, Ms. Craft, it was around 40 people who attended, but as you all know, Ms. Craft is recording all of the parent academies. So we're creating a catalog on our parent academy website for all those who can't attend the parent academies, that they can go back and access those specific events. That's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Di Toro. And nice to hear we had a very good turnout for the parent academy. Excellent. Our Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Ferris, report this evening.
Yes. So the first piece on the Agenda, I know, 19V speaks to a new partnership with Ramapo College's teacher education program here in our district. We've recently established this partnership with Ramapo College. This collaboration will welcome Ramapo's clinical interns, or student teachers, into our district classrooms, providing them with valuable, hands-on teaching experiences. In addition, district administrators will meet monthly with Ramapo College representatives to share insights and district needs, helping to better prepare future educators entering the profession. So we're really excited about this. I happened to be walking in Luntino School. All of these happy faces greeted me. I said, can I take a picture? And they were so pumped, and I share with them that I would be sharing this with all of you this evening. So Mrs. Pacelli's kindness card has returned for the fall season. Mrs. Pacelli's Spirit-Greed students visited classrooms and offices throughout the building, offering snacks and smiles to staff members as a gesture of ongoing appreciation. This thoughtful initiative continues to promote gratitude, connection, and kindness within the school community. So this was sparked a few years ago by Mrs. Pacelli, and it's been a great thing ever We have a few students, two students who have just been accepted and selected to participate in the prestigious Hackensack Meridian Health Center for Discovery and Innovation and Hackensack Meridian Health Research Institute Hands-On Workshop Series on Wednesday, December 10th. Those students are Devon Strummer and Camille Yupa. Both Devon and Camille are part of our biotechnology research and health science pathway, and this incredible opportunity will allow both of them to explore cutting-edge research and innovation in health science. So congratulations to these outstanding students for representing our school and steaming community with excellence.
Wow.
Very cool, right?
Thank you.
Nick stole some of my thunder, but you can see we have some students here at the Holes who participated in eight locations across the township. Also, Nick had made mention of the students who participated in the I Voted sticker design competition. So Junior Delina Wong, in collaboration with the League of Women Voters, launched an I Voted sticker design competition. Congratulations to our talented winners, Alina Ganalina, Samara Muriel, and Belagiani, whose designs will be printed and distributed at a League of Women Voters event in June. So we are proud of our students for being civically engaged. And last, but certainly not least, we have, we've recently lost a longstanding member of the Mawa community who recently retired, a few years ago in 2017, Mrs. Yvonne Beatrice. So I thought it was important to honor her legacy and her life because of how much she has done for this community. If anyone knew Yvonne, even in a brief exchange with her, you knew she was not only an awesome educator, but a wonderful human being. She's retired from our social studies department over at Mawa High School, and she was a beloved member of our school community. Mrs. Beatrice was a dedicated educator whose numerous accolades, including New Jersey History Teacher of the Year, have reflected her passions for teaching and history. She founded Mawa High School's mock trial team, the Art in the Classroom Initiative, and the Mawa Project, inspiring generations of students to connect with their community. Her contributions to education and civic life in Mawa will be remembered with deep appreciation. Yvonne's mission and love live on through all of those touched by her brilliance, including the Mawa Social Studies staff, as well as every student who embodied her ideals. So we pray for her family, and it's truly a loss this candy, but I thought it certainly warranted some additional recognition this evening. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ferris. And I will not forget tonight, because I did inadvertently forget last meeting, that we have our New Business Administrator Board Secretary, and I did not, I skipped right over you last week, last time. So my apologies, but this is Catherine Hiramoto, and your report this evening. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and it's okay, that last one. Don't worry. So good evening. I just want to start off by saying our open enrollment for health benefits began November 4th and will conclude on December 3rd. The Finance and Facilities Committee met on November 5th, where we discussed several important topics, including the 17.5% increase in our health insurance rate, which is still much lower than the 32% increase many districts are seeing under the state health benefits plan. We also reviewed the 2627 budget calendar and are beginning the process of building next year's budget, which continues to focus on the curriculum and operations that directly support our students' success. Our 2425 audit is still under review and should be wrapping up soon. The business office continues to work hard on creating processes and procedures to improve efficiency district-wide. We're also working with our Buildings and Ground Supervisor on the Trees for Schools grant. The Finance and Facilities Committee will be meeting again on December 10th, where we can review a proposed tree list and planting plan for our identified areas. Last, I'd just like to wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving next week, so I hope it's safe, relaxing, full of food, and that wraps up my report. Very short.
Thank you very much. Excellent first report. Thank you very much. All right, my report this evening. I actually, I just wanted to piggyback a little on what Dr. Ferris spoke about. I also wanted to just talk a little bit about Ms. Beatrice, and on behalf of the board, you know, I think several of us were able to go to her viewing as well and meet her family. One of the things that her husband said, which was very touching, is he said, "We knew her as Yvonne, but the world knew her as Mrs. B." And, and he's, they were, I think, very, very touched by the community, by the, you know, past students who came out, current students, but just, again, you know, parents, students, representatives of the town, because she really left a, really a living legacy in the Mawa Project. And also, you know, I talked to my children about it, they both had her. I guess she taught US History, AP, Constitutional Law, several social studies subjects, and actually, and my son, who's a little, you know, short for words, said, "Mom, she was one of the good ones at Mawa High School." And my daughter said she really inspired and really supported students. People felt like kind of, you went into her classroom, they felt accepted, they felt supported. So again, a true, true educator. We thank her for her service to Mawa Public Schools, and she will be missed, and our condolences to her family. The other thing that was very sweet that they had is her keychain collection. I don't, I don't know if those of you know, she collected keychains and encouraged her students to bring them. I think the Worthy family has contributed to the keychain collection, and she was, they had a, they had all the keychains there that night, and they were encouraging people to take one in her memory. So again, a tremendous asset to our district, and she will be missed. Thank you. Second, I think these are not official results, but I just wanted to congratulate incumbent Christopher Hughes from the election. I think it's not official, official, correct, Mrs. Hiramoto?
That was in the lead.
I'm not saying anything. I'm not giving numbers.
Go ahead, just close.
I just was going to congratulate Mr. Hughes and our newcomer, Mr. Houston, on their election victory. I wasn't even going to say anything about myself. But thank you, Mr. Kismarski, for mentioning that. Do appreciate it. And again, for everyone who comes out to this dais, who volunteers their time within all our busy schedules, I thank you for always your contributions to this board and to this district. So the other thing, Mawa High School ranked 11th recently in our, in Bergen County by US News and World Report for, on the ranking, so that was good. I also wanted to talk about our T-Bird pillars that I sometimes, it's one piece that no one has taken, so I'm going to continue with that. This is something, this is something that they recognize, a student and a teacher at Mawa High School.
Soaring Thunderbirds.
I'm sorry?
Soaring Thunderbirds.
Soaring Thunderbirds. I've been, I have been corrected. I apologize. Thank you, Dr. Di Toro. And the pillars are, oh, there we go. Soaring Thunderbirds, and the pillars are T for trusted, B for brave, I for inspiring, R for resilient, D for determined, and S for spirited. So in September, they had two people who were recognized, one, Marilla Matviva, I think I'm pronouncing that correctly, who's a 12th grader for being inspiring. Her peers wrote that she's inspiring in all she does. She speaks fluently in a language that's not native to her. She participates in many clubs while working and takes a strenuous course load and still finds time for her friends. She is in the Biotechnology Research and Health Science Track, she's in the marching band, she works on set construction for the play, and she's in the T-Bird Vocal Ensemble. The teacher recognized for September, Soaring Thunderbird is Jennifer Mizola, who's a social studies teacher, for being spirited. Her colleagues recognized Jen for embodying the very definition of school spirit and leadership. I think she took on working with the student government, and they said she brought energy, positivity, and grace to her work with them. In October, we have two individuals, one, Alexander Wong, who's 12th grade, for being trusted. Alex was nominated for being a trusted and respected student who naturally puts others at ease. Alex is a member of the Business Administration Pathway, National Honor Society, Science National Honor Society, Spanish National Honor Society, DECA, and the swim team. I, I'm exhausted reading the names, reading the list. And then Joseph Montana, as our mathematics teacher, also our MEA president as well, for being trusted. One of his students wrote, "Mr. Montana is the most trusted teacher I've ever had. What makes him truly special is how consistent and dependable he is. He keeps his word, treats every student with fairness and respect, and never judges anyone." So congratulations to our Soaring Thunderbirds. All right, that's all I have for this evening. Board of Committee reports. Mr. Copeland.
Thank you. Community Relations met Monday morning. I sent out a brief overview to all the board members. Wanted to piggyback on what Dr. Toro said about Monday night's Communications Committee meeting. It was really well attended. I wanted to thank everyone who came out. Everyone who was there were volunteers. They stepped up, they raised their hands, and they showed up. So thank you for everyone who came out, and I'm looking forward to working with that group, moving through the process. At our meeting Monday morning, we went, we were continuing our work with the referendum, looking at creative and our messaging. So that's ongoing work that we're going to be doing, you know, obviously for the next one, two, three months, three months. Went over some timelines and then just talked about some community outreach. I mentioned this in the email to the board members, if you have a community organization that you are aware of that we should be speaking to, starting in January, please reach out and let us know. We have started a, what I would say is a pretty comprehensive list, but I'm sure we may have missed one or two. So if there's, if there's an organization that you know that we should be knocking on their door and possibly talking to them in January, February about the referendum, please reach out. So that's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Copeland. Any other reports this evening? Mr. Gallo?
Finance and Facilities Committee has resumed our regular course of meetings. We, as Catherine pointed out, we started looking at some of our operating budget issues, and the office, the VA Office is well underway getting the process for the budget started for next year, which is great. And we also had obviously some referendum work that we were doing, primarily focused on, we sort of, I think Dr. Di Toro is, titled it sort of like Palm Referendum for Dummies, sort of getting a sense of like, what's, what's this really mean in terms, how does it work? How do you get the money? How do I go to the Cayman Islands with it? But no, but essentially the nuts and bolts of the financing process, what we're allowed to do with it, how we can manage it, how we can present it to the public. And we also provided them some updated information from our project list, so they had a better sense of, they could dial in their numbers a little bit better. So we're, we're still obviously still waiting for the state to tell us what they are agreeing or confirming to subsidize our projects with, but we're well underway with that aspect of the referendum. And obviously, a lot of the effort will be in the community outreach, effort to inform our community about these initiatives and what their value is to our students and programs. So that covers us for now, but we're good.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. Sure. Dr. Ferris? Would like to add on?
If I can just continue, I sent everyone an email today, I just wanted to give you guys some context of the email today. The state is working through the application process. They've been, from what Lan is sharing with us, they're really chopping away at the application process. They're very happy with where we're at, specific to the timeline of when we need to get our information so we can get out to the public as soon as possible, give everybody time. Part of the application, it's down to two questions that they had. One of those two questions was specific to Building 5. We've talked in the very beginning stages with two of our committees, but I want to make sure that I'm giving context to all. Ms. Rizzo and her team have been committed to bringing our kids back into district as much as possible. I talked about it a lot on Monday, but I wanted to talk about it again today. We're talking specifically to our, about how the district's doing. For the longest time that I've known Ms. Rizzo, she's talked about building programs within our district that supports our kids to the best that we can to make sure that they're getting what they need, no matter what. Now, there's some kids that would qualify for that, some kids still would need that out of district because of the extensive supports that they need. That being said, the next phase of our program development would be our 18 to 21-year-old program. I don't know how many of you know, but even with our special ed student population, even after they graduate, there is a portion of our population that still is entitled to services after they graduate from here up until they're 21. Those services we don't provide here, so they have to go out of district. Ms. Rizzo and her team have looked for opportunities for us to create a program here so they can stay home with us. With that being said, Building 5 has great potential. And for all of you that are aware of Building 5, Building 5 is a very interesting space. We have a portion of Building 5 that's our locker room facility for our football team, but then- team, but then we also have a files room. And I say files room, it's a massive space. And then we have a storage space as well. We've been working this year on, uh, clearing that space to the best of our ability, still being in compliance, but removing the, the things that aren't needed. And once we opened up that space, Ms. Rizzo, Ms. Rizzo looked at it and said, "I can do a lot with this space, specific to our 18 to 21-year-old program." That being said, we're still in the very beginning stages of that. So when we were putting our applications together and things like that, it wasn't a thought. But when they wrote, wrote back to us, um, yesterday, I wrote to, um, Matt from Land, because he said Building Five does not qualify for reimbursement, 'cause it's not an educational space. I said, "Well, I have an idea. Um, if by chance, we already will accomplish this vision, does that allow us to call it an educational space?" And as you all know, if it is an educational space, that comes with a 34% rebate from the state, which is real money. Um, I was very cautious about talking to him about how we move forward. I got a chance to speak to Mr. Gallo, 'cause I didn't want us to really mess up how we're, we're tracking along. Um, so I asked him just to inquire at the state level, um, if by chance we did share our vision of where we wanna go in the future with the space, would that qualify, number one, and number two, um, would that stall our timeline of moving forward with that March 10th date? So he's in the process of asking the state. He asked, he's sending an email today. I'm waiting to hear back. I know I sent the email, but I just wanted to give you, that's how it got to that space. So it's been the past 24 hours, uh, that we started to talk about it. Um, that reimbursement is, is significant. And that reimbursement that, that was shared is just for the infrastructure stuff, not even the setup, the classroom, which that also can be eligible for reimbursement too. So I'm hopeful. Um, once we get something back, I'll let you know before we go anywhere from that, anything that we get from the state. So everyone's on the same page along the lines of, should we go forward with this process, or should we keep the application as is? So that's what, that's where that lengthy email was from, from this referendum.
So just, real quick, thank you for, like, coming up with that, because, I mean, there's, there's, there's a big ripple effect there. Obviously, the, the 34% that the state would, you know, basically pick up of that project is real money. The money that we save by not having to send students out of, out of district is real money. But the most important part is having our kids be able to stay in Mawa and not have to go someplace else.
Yeah.
If we can keep them home, the, the money savings, obviously, it's super important, but like, from a, from a family perspective and a community perspective, that would be huge, you know? So that's, thank you for, for, you know, for figuring that out, putting that out there. Hopefully, we're able to, to accomplish that without screwing up our, our timeframe. Um, but that's fantastic.
Yeah, even, even the program that's just starting to be developed, I'm, I'm really excited for, uh, the board to hear about the potential of that program. Um, you know, we have an awareness of what those programs look like outside of here, and just the beginning stages of that design that Ms. Rizzo and her team are putting together, along lines of experience, um, and opportunity, far exceed what they currently have. Um, so not only are we bringing them back, but we're, I'm hope, I'm confident that we'll be able to even give them a better opportunity. Um, and, uh, it, it's, it's, it's gonna be a great way to continue to round out that, that vision of how much opportunity we can maintain here in Mawa.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dittora. Um, any other board committee reports this evening? Mr. Denise?
Um, the Policy Committee has, uh, five, um, policy regulations on tonight's agenda for first reading. This is just part of our, um, review of our policy inventory, and there were only minor language changes.
Thank you very much. All right, uh, board member remarks. Do you have any board member remarks or additional comments at this time? Okay. Um, all right, let's move on to, uh, old business, 17. We're taking A to C, A, B, and C. Uh, just note, C is a, a meeting from August, so just, uh, look at that when you're, um, uh, when you're yaying your name. Um, all right, and I need a motion on the floor. Mr. Kizmarski, second by Mr. Gallo. Mrs. Hiramoto, roll call, please.
Mr. Copeland?
Uh, yes, on A and B. I'm staying on C.
Mr. De Silva?
Uh, yes, on A and B. I'm staying on C.
Mr. Kizmarski?
I'm staying on A, B, and C.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes, on all.
Okay. Ms. Avoniero?
Um, yes, on A and C. Philip's staying on D.
Mr. Denise?
Yes, on all.
Dr. Morty?
Uh, yes, on A, B, and C. Thank you very much. All right, let's move on to new business. Other, we have 18A through S. I need a motion on the floor. Mr. Copeland, seconded by Mr. Kizmarski. We are voting on 18A through S. Mrs. Hiramoto?
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Mr. De Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarski?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Ms. Avoniero?
Yes.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Dr. Morty?
Yes. Um, all right, we have now new business personnel, which is 19A through Z. Um, I need a motion on the floor. Mr. Gallo, seconded by Mr. Denise. We are taking 19A through Z. Roll call, please. Mrs. Hiramoto?
Mr. Copeland?
Yes, and thank you to all the parent volunteers.
Mr. De Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarski?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Ms. Avoniero?
Yes.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Dr. Morty?
Yes. All right, uh, we can move on now to public questions or comment. Public participation at board meetings is in accordance with Bylaw 0167. At this time, members of the public may ask questions or make a comment on educational issues or school matters of community interest. It's a matter of fairness. You are asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you are here as an individual, please provide your name and address. All right, I need a motion to open the meeting to the public. Mr. De Silva, seconded by Mr. Gallo, we are officially open to the public.
Sorry about before.
That's a question. Still, no worries, no worries. Thank you for coming, Julia. We appreciate it.
Thank you guys for being here. We appreciate you. Um, my name is Stephanie Lettigar, 41 Glasgow Terrace. This is Kim Pacella, Melissa De Vries. Um, we're the parents of second grade girls at Lenape, and we just wanna make sure that the board is aware of some issues that concern us there. And it has been ongoing since we've joined the school. Um, I just wanna read, so I don't miss out. We are here tonight because we are deeply concerned about student safety, specifically repeated incidents of physical aggression and violence occurring in the classrooms, and especially at recess. There have been multiple situations where children have been physically harmed by other students. In many of these cases, supervision was limited or cameras did not capture the incidents. When situations go unseen, they often go unaddressed or are handled without clear communication or accountability. Students who are repeatedly physically aggressive and abusive are being returned to the classroom without a consistent or adequate intervention plan, and this puts other children at risk. No child should feel unsafe at school. No parent should worry about their child being hurt during recess. Our children have witnessed and been victims of aggression, abuse, and have words that no six- to eight-year-olds should have. We fully believe in supporting all students, including those with behavioral challenges, but safety must come first. This district has a responsibility to provide a safe learning environment for every student, and that is simply not happening. We are asking that the board take the following actions. Increase in adult supervision and coverage during recess, and ensure that the staff is alert, appropriately supervising, and trained to notice behavior escalation before a larger issue arises. Ensure cameras are fully monitoring high-risk areas and that footage is reviewed when incidents are reported. Require consistent documented intervention plans for students who repeatedly engage in violent behavior. Um, students have been given a coloring worksheet on their feelings, and that is not sufficient after repeated occurrences. These are not punitive measures. They are necessary safeguards. We're not here to complain. We're here to advocate for our children. Our children deserve to learn without fear, and we will not stand by and ignore all of these red flags. We will not allow a tragedy occur before something changes. We expect a safe, safe supervised learning environment, and we look forward to seeing concrete steps taken to address these concerns. Thank you for your time and your commitment to student safety.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lettigar?
Lettigar.
Lettigar. And, I'm sorry, I didn't get the other two names, but tha, thank you very much, and, and, um, you know, we appreciate the feedback, and, and, um, Dr. Dittora, I'm sure will, go ahead. Did either of you wanna speak as well?
It's a committee.
It's a committee group, all, okay. And, um, uh, we, we do, we, we take that very seriously, and, um, I'm sure Dr. Dittora will, uh, look into it, and, or if you have some, okay.
First of all, thank you very much for coming and sharing your concerns. And as a parent, um, I'm gonna tell you that I agree along the lines of always looking out for your kid and making sure that they're safe in school, and that if behaviors are being inter, uh, if behaviors are happening, they're being advised. So I don't take that lightly, and I don't want to, um, make you feel like this is a, um, to thank you for coming and have a seat. I, I didn't want that to be. Let me explain to you, because I'm aware of the situation that you're referring to, um, and let me kinda tell you, as best as possible, steps that are taken without breaching any sort of confidentiality. Um, some of the things that you said along the lines of the aggression piece and the, the words piece, let me tell you, from the get-go, we have zero tolerance for that. Um, we're not okay with kids saying things that are inappropriate. We're not okay with kids being physically, uh, um, aggressive. Um, that being said, unfortunately, things make, the kids make bad decisions, and it's our job to address those decisions through consequences, more importantly, through remedial measures of teaching through that. I do want you to realize, um, and I'm sure that Administration Lani Meadows was hesitant to talk about any sort of consequence, the behaviors that you're referring to were not addressed by a coloring, uh, piece of paper. And, and again, I'm not trying to minimize, I just want you to understand, they were more comprehensive than that. So consequences were administered. Um, the supervision piece, um, is a constant focus for us across all element, elementaries of addressing whoever's outside for lunch and recess. You're absolutely right, there's a lot going on, and we need to make sure that we're staffing that. What I can tell you is, it's not even just the staffing piece. You brought up a very good point. It's who's ever out there, what is their zone that they're, they're reviewing, and they're committed to staying in that area, and they're aware of what is taking place. And whatever they see percolating there, they're addressing it before it becomes a bigger issue. So that's another priority. We also are fortunate enough, not only with the consequence piece, which again is more significant, um, but there's also an opportunity for us to work through with guidance counselors, bringing parents in, and doing things specific to supervision of the repeated offenders, of making awareness of all the adults that come across those students, of keeping an eye on that situation, and making sure, to the best of our ability, that behavior does not happen again. What I can tell you is, there's no perfect way to address this, but because it's a massive priority for us, it's a continued focus for us, and it's not something that, just because it happened a week ago, and we might've had a good week, then it's over. It's an ongoing focus for us, and we, we're not gonna tolerate physical behavior or the verbal misconduct as well.
I appreciate that. This has been happening since our children were in kindergarten.
What I can tell you was, the information was just shared with me last week, um, and the-
I'm not just referring to that specific incident.
Right. So I'm just referring to the way in which we address misconduct. Specifically, this one, I'm talking more about this one as well. Um, but I totally understand, and I want you to understand, I agree along the lines of, it's not okay for kids to be physically aggressive. It is not okay for kids to use language that even at the high school level is inappropriate. So I don't wanna minimize that, and I don't want you to walk away thinking that I'm minimizing that at all. Um, but please know that there's an awareness, and there's gonna be an on, ongoing monitoring and supervision of that behavior.
Okay. I have, I'm sorry. I have, uh, I'm sorry. I have, um, a question.
Name and address.
Sorry. Uh, Kimberly Pacella, One Jersey Ave, Mawa. Um, so I, I guess it goes along with this, when you fill out the HIB form, um, it's, it states somewhere, I read, that, um, if you falsely file it, there are serious consequences, but it doesn't state, like, what, what happens if it's, like, retaliatory? Uh, 'cause to me, it just feels like more intimidation to, to the parents who do file it rightfully. So I was hoping that maybe you could explain what some of those consequences are, and what, like, what happens then when it's just, you know, clearly the bullying is learned at, at home by adults who are then just gonna try to intimidate and bully another parent.
I really pride myself on being able to give you a, a direct answer, but here's what I can tell you. Um, if by chance that is the case, that's something that we would have, because it's, it's more of a code and a law in New Jersey, we'd have to work with our, our legal counsel to get what next steps are. Because what you're referring to is adult behavior as opposed, as opposed to student behavior. It's very easy, not easy, but it's, it's, we're experienced with navigating the student HIV things, but you're talking about reporting back from adult against the student of another, correct?
Yeah.
So what, what I'm hearing you say is, if by chance, um, I say, I feel as though my child's, there's two cases. I feel as though my child is being bullied, I put in a report, and then the parent of the child who I'm accusing of bullying puts in a report against my child.
Bullying.
That's one. Then, or, somebody does something wrong or inappropriate to my child, they're held accountable for it, and then the child who is doing the wrong thing, their parent puts a case on your child, who was the victim of the behavior, if I'm hearing you correctly.
Yes.
Okay. So needless to say, I'll go back to my first statement. The bullying law is put into place for student behavior. That being said, the caveat that you're, you're referring to, that false accusation piece, that would be something that we would have to work with legal counsel on, what those next steps would be. Um, because we, that's something that we don't wanna have a misstep on. If that makes sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Just as a final statement, we do appreciate the teachers and their commitment very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, I need a motion to close the meeting to the public. Mr. Kizmarski, seconded by Mr. Copeland.
Dr. Morty, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Oh, did I miss something?
No, you did, and I did. Um, I wanted to remind everyone, our, we're starting our roadshow meetings in December, and, um-
I was wondering about that.
And our next meeting, December 3rd, we'll be at JK, and then December 17th, we'll be at Lenape. And then we'll have more info when the 2026 schedule comes out, so. First of the first two, so I apologize.
No, that's okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Copeland. Um, all right, I need a motion to recess to executive session. Mr. Kizmarski, seconded by Mr. De Silva. We will, uh, adjourn from there directly, so thank you all for coming out. Have a good evening.